A call is meeting orders. This is the work session of the Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee County of Cochise and State of Arizona to be held on Tuesday, January fourteenth, twenty twenty, at five thirty PM at the City Hall Building, nine fifteen South Toverville Road, Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Coronado, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Louis Pollak.
Here.
Councilmember Joni Jacomino.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns is excused. Councilmember Joan Hansen.
Here.
Councilmember Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff Teresa Coleman, City Manager, Ashley Coronado, City Clerk, Alberta Chava, Police Chief, James Ledbetter, City Attorney.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome, everybody. Although it is not on the agenda, I will allow a call to the public. I don't see any call to the public. I have assigned in sheet item number one. Ms. Coleman, do you want to set item one on the table and then I'll call everybody up?
May I defer, it's the evening?
Surely.
Okay.
Thank you. Members of the public, mayor, council. Staff and I have prepared for you an animal ordinance that is for you tonight. It has garnered a lot of, obviously, feedback from the community. Some of that feedback from the community has been interesting because a lot of the community complaints have been addressing things that are currently in your ordinance. For example, the fanning of dogs. That's in your current ordinance. It has been removed at your direction from this draft ordinance. So there are many things that when folks finally sat down and read the ordinance that's been in place for some ninety years, that folks got some concern about it, reading what was there. The direction that I received from your new city manager, however, was to incorporate it and research, involve ourselves with consultants, with some veterinarians, follow the direction of the American Humane Society, the American Bird Conservancy, and the HSUS, which is the Humane Society of the United States. I didn't know there were two until embarking on this task. So I'm going through, a number of things have been added to your ordinance. You have before you copies that show the current ordinance and the yellow language, which is new language. So for example, in the proposed ordinance that before you, there's now penalties for abandoning an animal that didn't previously exist under your old ordinance. Abuse is now defined under your new ordinance. There was vagueness as to what constituted animal abuse in the past. There's a provisions now about animal control officers because there wasn't an animal control officer where your old ordinance was passed. There are new provisions associated with things like baiting, which means to attack with violence to provoke or harass any animal. Those have been added at staff direction into the ordinance. You may have heard in the community, there's a new provision that has concern about raising bees. That would be misstated. What's in the ordinance with respect to bees is anybody who raises bees in your community consistently with the recommendation from the University of Arizona must report that they're raising bees. Most bees in this area have now become Africanized, and the city manager then issues a permit for a two-year period to hold bees, as an example. The city manager also with respect to existing livestock, she has altered the provisions allowing existing livestock to live in the city of Bisbee until that livestock is deceased. But new livestock, which will include mules, horses, cows, for example, those would have to have specific permission and be licensed by the city appropriately. Another issue that has been, I think, has garnered some significant questioning was the issue with respect to feral cat communities. Consistently, again, with the American Humane Society, the American Bird Conservancy, the Humane Society of the United States, staff and I have recommended to you that you go away from the feral cat community, which requires capturing, spaying, notching the animals' ears, all of that in your existing ordinances, and instead go to the provision that prohibits the feeding of feral cats and also the feeding of feral animals for the protection of other animals and for the protection and safety of the cats themselves. Again, this is not something that is arcane, perhaps, or this is not something that the staff are coming to you to try to provoke, but rather the staff's goal was to take an ordinance that's been around for many years, that had some serious provisions in it, that when, I think, when people read them, they were concerned, as was the staff. So according to the staff-directed more humane approach and sought to do that, well, there be exceptions, of course. Well, the council, what we do is give suggestions and ideas to the council. You are the policymakers. We do not advance an agenda to you, rather we give you ideas that are consistently with what research suggests our current direction from folks who study this issue regularly and frankly, for the benefit of animals. And these provisions also, for example, allow now for any city employee to, if they see an animal in danger, to act. Previously, there had to be a call to law enforcement if an animal was left in a hot car with the windows up. Now others can act to seek the protection of the animal. So I think staff did a really good job, and frankly, there's been probably more than any other issue we've worked on, there's been a lot of feedback from staff with additional ideas to make Bisbee's current ordinance more humane. And again, if you have any specific questions, I'm glad to answer them, but that's kind of the background on what was bringing us to today and bringing this issue before you.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Books or seats up here?
Oh, okay.
I'll be going through this list. I will be, obviously, we have a three-minute roll as per the city code, as well as for it not to become cumulative, for everybody not to get up and say the same thing. Numbers don't necessarily mean that your argument having to do with anything is correct. Radiann Porter, ma'am? Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Radiann Porter. I currently live at three oh three Mill, but historically, I lived in old Bisbee at four sixteen B. Pearlie, on the edge of the feral cat problem. I was born and raised in Bisbee and am quite well aware of some of these ordinances and how they have evolved organically through time. It is my opinion that the, while some of these aspects of this ordinance are certainly more humane in terms of how animals are treated, it appears to me to be much more restrictive. It is typical in this community in the last few years that we're really busy killing the goose that laid the golden egg. The more regulations that we can apply, the less Bisbee is the unique and pleasant place that it was to live in. And we need to really consider whether or not it's the city's job to police the number of chickens that someone has or, you know, down to the minutia that exists in this ordinance. The city has paid lip service to desiring a sustainable community, but if I am, if the number, let's say that I am raising chickens, which I do, and I have six chickens, but I don't, six chickens are not going to give me enough eggs to supply to someone to the farmer's market, for instance. If you want that sustainable kind of thing in this community, you need to develop ordinances that support that to some degree. It makes better sense in your ordinance to look at language that is, rather than saying, "I can have six chickens," it is, "I can have chickens if I care for them in a manner that is equitable with the standards of good animal husbandry." You know, if I only have a hundred square feet, I can't have a hundred chickens because that's inappropriate way to keep an animal. It is not humane. The city needs to have a more flexible approach when they are looking at things that are restricting what is the nature of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Catherine Wells.
Get over what Radiann said.
Yeah, very well spoken.
Well, thank you.
Dana House. Welcome.
My name is Dana House. I live at sixty-four Cochise Row, and I'm here to just speak specifically on TNR and feral cat issues. Since I purchased my house five years ago, I have been doing trap and release on the row. I noticed there were a lot of ill cats when I bought my house, and I have successfully trapped and altered and released, to my knowledge, all of them on my street and run a successful cat colony. I have a feral cat house that is shelter for them, and between my five neighbor houses and I, they all are fed and taken care of. And I just want to state that as a testament to TNR being successful. Two years ago, we had upwards of forty-three ill, malnourished, maligned kittens, literally dying in the street in front of my house. And last year, we had one kitten that was taken to the shelter, altered and adopted out, and I haven't seen any kittens since. So it's just highly successful. And with the topic of TNR or feral cats in general, it is not a reality that it's something you can get away from. It has to be addressed, and if it is ignored, it spirals out of hand, which we've seen on Brophy. And more recently, I've been asked to help with TNR and other locations in Bisbee, which I have assisted with, also to success. It requires somebody who is willing to put in the time. But I take the cats out of Cochise County. I take them up to Puma County to the Humane Society in Tucson, where they treat them, and I bring them back and release them because everything in Cochise County is so strapped and it's so difficult. The shelter is overburdened, but I'm willing to do that, and I know other people are as well, and it's worked very successfully. And it's nice to see those cats being healthy and vaccinated, not spreading diseases like they have that and are up on Brophy. And that's, I just want to say that it works.
Thank you, ma'am. Jeff Harris.
There's so much I dislike about, my name is Jeff Harris. I live in Warren. I've lived there for almost four decades. There's so much I dislike about this ordinance, it's hard to know where to start. What I might read is case law from this state. Municipalities derive their powers from charters or the legislation. The powers of the municipal corporation are those given it by the state. Many of the aspects of this proposed animal ordinance exceed the limit the city has to Many of the aspects are unconstitutional. This ordinance is at best a bad idea. The answer to problems is not to pass more and more restrictive legislation. It's a strong heading. It's against the very nature of this community, the smaller community. This is not a gated community that needs oppressive legislation to keep the folks in love. One of the, one of the things that was mentioned was that the grandfathering was going to run with the animal, not with the land use. This is not appropriate. Grandfathering, by its very nature, runs with the land, not with each individual animal. Even if it were, this is an absurd concept. What are we going to have? Hire some more people to keep check of each animal, see when one dies or when doesn't? This is absurd on its face. For this oppressive legislation to be enforced as it is written in the draft, you would need to hire many more animal control officers or police. It is, it is unbearably, intolerably intrusive. One of the things that bothers me is that it, under the guise of barring interference with an animal control officer, it is making, it criminalizing the desire or the possibility of resisting unconstitutional warrantless searches at one's premises. This is crazy.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Your time is up. I appreciate you having a couple of minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff of the City of Bisbee. My name is Karen Schumacher. I live and work in old Bisbee. I'm here tonight to speak against the proposed animal ordinance. Honestly, more than anything, I'm annoyed that I have to be here this evening and say the following things that seem so blatantly obvious to myself and so many other members of my community. My first point is that the most of the unnecessary drama that ensued, thanks to this animal ordinance, could have almost entirely been circumvented had a work session occurred before the vote in December. In this case, I will forgive the city manager under the assumption that she did not perhaps realize the intensity of backlash that her agenda item would create. Those I do not forgive are those of you who advise, speak to, and work with the city manager every day that did not try and dissuade this irrational turn of events. Writing an ordinance of this kind without fully researching the recommendations of national organizations such as the Humane Society of Arizona or asking for input from the Bisbee Animal Shelter's staff and volunteers, those members of your community that work every day on the ground dealing with these exact issues is at best an act of complete reckless and oblivious arrogance. And it's, and at worst, no, sorry, it is, at worst, a complete reckless and oblivious arrogance and at best, an insult to those who have more knowledge and yet less civic power than yourselves. In short, so little thought was given to practical procedure and community input that I doubt there is any virility behind the actual ordinance should it pass. Speaking of, my second point is this. As this ordinance is currently written, there are more holes in it than there are tunnels under the City of Bisbee. My background is not in government, but I have read my fair share of ordinances, and it took me several rereadings to even understand what the city was proposing, especially when it came to livestock. And I still am in a complete loss of how the city intends to enforce any of it. We all know there's little enforcement of many current ordinances, and so this ordinance is probably nothing more than a copy and pasted waste of time and paper. That is, if cherry pick to be enforced, sets the city up for additional unnecessary lawsuits, public confusion, unclear repercussions, and a ridiculous amount of work hours spent by city employees. And third, someone chose to include at the end of your agenda packet tonight, an outdated article from two thousand and four that speaks against the feeding of feral cats. What was not shared with the public and was not included in your packet is what I find more troublesome. On December eleventh, the senior analysis, or analyst for cat protection and policy for the Humane Society of America and the senior state director of the Humane Society of Arizona wrote a letter to the mayor that says, and I quote, "Banning the feeding of community cats does not make them go away."
Your time is up.
It goes on to talk about a feeding ban that is ineffective and inhumane policy.
Ma'am, your time is up.
... Thank you. Thank you.
Cassie Salpik.
Kathy Sodun, thirty-four oh five West Highway eighty. Currently, there are a number of Arizona revised statutes that address various animal welfare issues. Most recently, an anti-cruelty law was enacted. It even addresses animal hoarding, which is frequently labeled as a feral cat problem. I'm concerned about why some of these state laws are included in this ordinance, which is supposed to be local laws, and why they're not identified as such. It makes it very hard to read the document. Also, it would help to know what are changes to the existing ordinance and what are the original ordinance. I've never in my life been in a council meeting where you don't strike through things so that you can see what the changes are. The other thing is why fix things that aren't broken. I mean, I'm especially caught up in the feral cat issue, but has there been a problem with bees and mules? I mean, this is a great way to reduce our census, because people live here for certain reasons, and that's one of them, like Radiann said. What I find most confusing is how frequently Bisbee writes ordinances and how rarely they enforce them. If we can enforce a leash law, if we can't enforce a leash law, how are we going to enforce this twelve-page document? We have a twenty-hour-per-week animal control officer. When someone calls about a dog at large, if she's not on duty, the police say, "Oh, she'll be back tomorrow at nine." So yeah, we're going to be able to do all of this. That makes a lot of sense. Let's support, let's appoint an ad hoc committee that understands our community and animal issues and is up to date on current animal welfare standards. This obviously wasn't the case.
Emily. Is it Sayre? I'm sorry.
Kayer.
Kayer, thank you.
Emily Kayer, Ward one. I live and work in old Bisbee. I'm here to read part of a letter that was addressed to Mayor Smith and the mayor and all the council members received regarding the feral cat issue. Cat management should be designed to protect public safety, protect cats, and provide animal control agencies with effective proactive humane tools to manage cat populations. Unfortunately, the language of this proposed ordinance that we're all here about tonight fails to include any provisions to that end and instead relies on an inhumane ban of feeding feral cats. Banning the feeding of community cats does not make them go away. There are more effective strategies to managing free-roaming cat populations than employing such inhumane measures. Reactive punitive strategies such as feeding bans have proven ineffective at managing community cats time and time again. Communities across the country have found citations do not stop people from feeding cats. When feeding is sanctioned, it can be monitored and managed. This means it can be done in a way that is sanitary and will not attract wildlife or otherwise cause a public nuisance. A ban often does not result in cats not being fed, but rather can create new conflicts. This is a quote from the American Bar Association, that was in that letter. Quote, "Feeding bans cause a real dilemma legally for caregivers. By feeding the community cats they care for, caregivers could be violating such an ordinance, but by adhering to the ordinance, they could conceivably find themselves in violation of a cruelty provision by failing to provide care to those same animals." End quote. Indeed, the very ordinance which bans the feeding of feral cats also requires caretakers to provide adequate food and water to those same animals. The Humane Society of the United States goes on to say, "We encourage you to adopt TNR, that's trap muter return, as an official policy, including the associated caretaking of these cats and the humane mitigation of complaints. When implemented effectively, a community cat program can, one, decrease municipal costs. TNR is less expensive than trapping and impounding cats, caring for them during their stray hold, and providing an outcome be that adoption, transfer, or euthanasia. Restricting feeding is difficult and costly to enforce and does not address the root cause of the problem and is simply a waste of taxpayer dollars. Two, it can decrease public health and safety concerns. Vaccinating community cats against rabies as part of a TNR program should be supported as a preventive measure against the potential spread of the disease. A feeding ban simply results in unvaccinated, unhealthy cats continuing to live in the community. Third, it can decrease nuisance complaints. Spayed and neutered cats are less likely to fight over mates, food, and territory. They roam less and they no longer emit the pungent odor of intact male cat urine. Managed colonies of cats are less likely to disturb trashcans looking for food and through the humane, use of humane deterrents, be conditioned to avoid areas where they are not welcome. Finally, this community cat program, when implemented effectively, can reduce predation on wildlife. Limiting the feeding of these cats may put native wildlife in danger." To wrap up, when the community is engaged in the solution, working in collaboration with the government, results will be seen more quickly. Regular feeding of cats at established locations allows caretakers to identify new cats or maybe boss for needed sterilization or rehoming. This is the most effective method treating cat populations and the issues related to them. Thank you.
Kelly Galloway.
Hi, I'm Kelly Galloway. I live in five ten A Brophy, and I'm president of the Bisbee Animal Shelter. There's really only one reason in doing research why communities enact feeding bans, and it's because they're exasperated and they want an immediate fix. Well, a feeding ban is not an immediate fix. It's not a fix at all. I think the people who are advocates of this ban need to explain how and why they expect this to be an effective solution. Like, step one, there's a ban. Step two, everyone complies. Step three, what, they have like starving zombie cats roaming around? Is that, I'd like a step-by-step analysis of how this is expected to work. And most important, I'd like for someone to cite a single place where a feeding ban has resulted in successfully reducing the number of feral cats. Because from all the research that I've done, I can't find such a place. So I don't know why people think that the same tired solution results in a different outcome here, not to mention the incredible inhumanities or in ordinance. And simply put, I think we're better than this. So when you're ready to discuss actual effective solutions for community cats that the whole community can participate in and get behind, friends of the animal shelter is ready to sit down like you, and so is the Humane Society of the United States, whose attention this issue has been brought. And it's kind of a deal that the state director is getting involved in this, and we should take her up on her offer of help. Thank you.
Clara Shafir. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council, and all of our Bisbee family who's shown up today. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, because usually I talk too softly. What I'd like to say tonight is, I've done some research, and some of it's already been covered, so I won't discuss it. I won't bother anybody with what I have to say. I'd like to give the definition of wildlife per the state statutes. Everybody knows I like the statutes. Then Title seventeen, statute seventeen dash one oh one, quote, "Wildlife means all wild animals, wild birds, and the nests and eggs thereof, reptiles, amphibians, mollusks, crustaceans, and fish, including eggs, are spawned." Now, what's in the actual draft, where it came from, I don't know, but there's an add-on that says also includes domesticated animals who are not under the care of a person or persons and/or which need veterinary care. I don't know where it came from. It would be nice to find out. It also says in these statutes, "Wild means in reference to mammal embers, those species found in a state of nature." Okay? I don't understand where some of this stuff is that's showing up, you know, in the draft. It'd be nice if we knew that, because not all of it is, I don't know where the legalities are, so maybe we need to be addressing some of that. Also, just so everybody knows, okay, some of these offenses, to me, are kind of obscene. I mean, and that's in the statutes for misdemeanor sentencing, ARS thirteen seven oh seven. A petty offense, which you'll see a lot on there, it's no jail time, it's a type of misdemeanor, and you get up to a three hundred dollar fine. So if you feed something you're not supposed to, okay, you can get up to a three hundred dollar fine. You get a class two misdemeanor, you have a maximum of four months in jail, seven hundred dollar fine up to, and a surcharge, and two years probation. A class three misdemeanors there a little bit, and that's a possible penalty of up to one year of unsupervised probation, up to five hundred dollar fine plus surcharge, and up to thirty days jail, and that'll stay on your record for ninety-nine years. You can try to go and expunge. You can try to get a sponge near to nothing of a chance. So you can have that on your record forever.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Hi, how y'all doing tonight? You can tell that this is a pretty serious concern for a lot of the citizens of Bisbee here, despite just showing up here. I know hundreds of other people that would like to be here right now to be able to express their dissatisfaction with this ordinance that you're trying to push through right here. It doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. I moved to town from a ranch that I was on the outskirts of town. Before I moved in, I came to the city hall, and I asked them if I could bring some animals in, and they came out with the city inspector to look at my plot map, and they said, "Hey, according to how much land you have, you could have up to three horses." And I was like, "Oh, that's amazing." And they said, "Well, you could have up to three of anything that you want." And so I do have some animals in Old Bisbee, and they're precious. They're my pets. They're my love. And I'm really surprised that you guys are trying to wrench out some people that have been raising their pets here in town. So I'm totally against this ordinance, and I'm really surprised that it's being pushed forward. The first line that you have in this ordinance is that the purpose of this ordinance is protect the public health, the safety, and the comfort and convenience and the general welfare in order to secure the social, physical, and economic advantages of the city and the citizens of Bisbee. That means this entire ordinance goes against that one first line that you have written on here. And the way that I see it is that there's going to be a lot of lawsuits, and this is going to be a lot of time that you're all going to have to spend dealing with this as we move on. And so I appreciate all the animals here, animal lovers here, like that. Because they are our loved ones, unconditionally. They give us the support. They give us comfort. They give us security, our pets do. And so it's really sad that you can come in at this point and say, "Hey, sorry, your grandfather died." And so I just see a lawsuit coming.
Thank you.
Tate, what are you doing here? Hi, I'm Dale Miller. I live and work in Old Bisbee. I came in here tonight to support my fellow Bisbee people and to say that this bill, this ordinance is very confusing to most standard readers. And to not have it given to us ahead of time to even look at and see if we wanted it voted on by the council is a little strange. And so just to look out at the crowd, we've got a lot of people here that are concerned about this being passed. And just to take a second look to really dive in, make sure that all the details are correct and acceptable for our town would be a nice thing. Thank you.
Holly, is it Kell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for coming here and all of you that are here tonight. Yeah? I would like to address the poultry, although I agree with everything that's been said here tonight, like to address the poultry and livestock aspect of this. Because I'm a senior citizen, I'm a low-income person, and quite frankly, a lot of the food that I derive is from my friends who have livestock, who have chicken eggs, who have rabbits, and things like this. At a time when as Americans we feel sometimes less and more, excuse me, more and more powerless about what's happening to us, about our food chains, about the, just the overall concerns about what's being put into our food, it's really wonderful to be able to know where your food's coming from and to be able to have that food. Food has to travel a long way to get to Bisbee. We're in a rural area. And I would just like you to understand that most of the people that have poultry and livestock in town, it's not because they're hoarding animals, it's actually because they want and need food, and they give that food, what they don't use, to people like me. I just thank you so much for thinking about this part of it, okay? Thank you.
Gretchen, Bear.
She didn't make it in time.
Al, Tyler.
Couldn't make it in time, but she's against it.
Okay, that pretty much exhausts that question. Couple things I just wanted to say. People have come up and talked about several different areas of this ordinance in total, indicating that they're against the ordinance. I'm somewhat confused with, I believe that they're against certain parts of the ordinance. Some may be against the whole ordinance because some were against any ordinance. But there's many, many parts of this ordinance having to do with outlawing dog fighting, and then many other things that I feel I doubt that people are against. I also just wanted to indicate that several of the people that have come up here talking about the feral cats and feeding feral cats are some of the very people that I've received phone calls from complaining about neighbors feeding feral cats. So when we look at some of these things as a mayor, as a council, we are listening to the community. Obviously, you all are definitely a part of the community, but you are not the community. You're a portion of the community. I doubt that anybody here is, has, nobody's jumped up and said, "I'm for feeding, against, you know, I think we should not feed feral cats." Sometimes that's called the silent majority, but I don't know that. But what I am indicating is we act in what we're told. And that this is an item that has been before us, that I've discussed personally with a number of you in this audience for some, at least five years, and have not been provided good, concrete answers as to how we accomplish, particularly the feral cat issue. Dana is the only, Kelly, please keep it down. Dana's the only one that I know of that has actually had the issue that apparently is solved. And I think it's interesting because as soon as this proposal came out, which has been advertised and has been available to anybody, and most people have read it, that as soon as it came out, all of a sudden, the calls that I was getting personally about feral cats, particularly in Old Bisbee, ceased as if they all went away. And I hope they did. But it's just a very strange circumstance that once something is drafted to take a drastic step on it, all of a sudden, it seems like the problem isn't as great a problem as it was. And I hope that that's the case. I hope that problem does go away. And I look forward to go away without any action whatsoever from the council, but I think that's naive. With that, I open up Mr. Allen.
Yes, thank you. I heard a lot of things tonight that gave me pause to quantify, but my approach to this has been twofold. I'm unhappy with the fact that there's one sentence in here that says it's against the law to feed feral cats. I don't think that's an effective solution to this problem. The other problem that I had with the original ordinance was that there was no flexibility. It was dogmatic. It said, "If you do this, you're in trouble. No exceptions." The rewrite has very many exceptions in it. It gives you the opportunity to address the city and to get an exemption from the clauses in here that you are concerned with. I think that's a good step in the right direction. I could nitpick this thing over words here and words there. I'm not going to do that. My primary objective here is to address TNR versus you can't feed the cats. I've seen a lot of literature from people in the community. I've talked to people in the community, and I've done some research on my own. I can't find anything that supports a ban on feeding feral cats. I've found a lot of literature, and I've heard a lot of talk from people about the success that they've had with trap neuter and release. And I would like to see trap neuter and release incorporated into this ordinance so that there would be some semblance of rationality to the solution for the problem. Those are my feelings. Those are my comments. I agree with most of what you said, Mr. Mayor, about the opportunity for people to read this ordinance and to know what's in it. I don't agree with all the comments that were made tonight, but I think that we can come to a compromise on what's included in this ordinance. We have a problem in Ward 3. There are some provisions in this ordinance that will help solve that problem. It's a very serious problem, and I would like to see it solved amicably without any harm to individuals. I think this ordinance would go a long way to make that happen. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Jeff, Megan.
Yeah, I have a few things. So first off, I want to say that Ms. Johns contacted me and told me to state, because she's not here, she has somewhere else she has to be, that she is not in agreeance with the feeding ban, the farm animals, or the bees. I don't know if she's seen the thing where it says permission on the bees, but she didn't want me to state that. I also have an issue with the banning of the feeding of feral cats from a biological standpoint, and I've stated this before. If we take away the food source from those cats, they are going to affect our population whether we like it or not. I think the issue with the feral cats is not, you know, the complaints about the feral cats wasn't about feral cats that were altered and trapped, neutered, and released and being fed. It was the fact that there are certain cats that were not trapped, neutered, and released, and taken care of that were causing the problem. And people's hands were tied, and that was causing the issue. So, yeah, people were complaining about that, but they were complaining about the fact that we could not access those cats and take care of them like they should have been, neutered them, released them in order to keep the population down. Dana made a very good point when she stated the population on Goat Row, I might say, has been taken under control. I have friends that live down there. I've been on that road for many years, and I've noticed a substantial decrease in the cat population. I said that kind of facetiously, but Goat Row got its name because of the livestock that used to be allowed in this town. Yeah, it's been on our books. It's been on our books forever, but again, it hadn't been enforced, and unfortunately, sometimes when we go in quickly and try to enforce things, it causes problems because practices have already been put into place. And coming in now and tightening the news, so to speak, quickly is causing problems for people that have relied on food sources and these animals. Another issue, I guess the same issue, or confusion, I don't want to say an issue, I keep reading these 6.111, talking about housing livestock and fowl, and it talks about specific zoning ordinances, but then when you get all the way back to 6.125, after it tells you all the things you can do and how many you can have, then it tells you that you're not allowed to have anything. And that, to me, is a conflict, and I'm still trying to figure that out. One of the ladies brought up a fact about rabbits. I used to raise rabbits before H1 was in Bisbee, and I lived on the trail. I know people that raised rabbits to eat, and as one lady had said, that's the only food that they have. Are we now going to be restricting rabbits that are kept in cages and are kept, you know, up and used for food sources? The goats, I don't see where pygmy goats are any different than a Great Dane. Actually, I can see a big difference. I can see the fertilizer from the little pygmy goats that are nice and just like little dogs, and the piles of fecal matter that Great Dames distribute. So I wish, or I'd like, I would like to see more exceptions, I guess, because some people have pets that are not within the norms of dogs and cats. When I lived out of town, I had pigs, and I had pot-bellied pigs that were like my dogs. I've known people that have had pygmy, pygmy goats that lived in their house, and they were litter trained. So, you know, I kind of, I have some issues with that. And again, one of the statements in 6.111 states specific zoning ordinances associated with the property, if allowed. Well, it says if it's allowed there, but then again, you jump back to 6.125, and it's telling you that it's unlawful for anybody to keep or maintain in the corporate city limits, any kind of livestock. Working in the city of Bisbee and volunteering in the city of Bisbee, I come into contact with a lot of tourists, and many of them find the quirkiness and the uniqueness of the goat lady, and when cat dog, rat guy was here, and the pygmy goats. These are things that kind of give Bisbee its personality, and I don't want to see that taken away. Again, when you, and I know I'm kind of rambling, sorry, ADHD, but 6.116, again, talks about it's unlawful for any person or any teacher, herd, holder, pasture, a herd, a herd is more than three. So is it saying in that statement that I can now have two? Two goats, you know, two pigs, and my, you know? So again, I'm finding a little bit of confusion. I was originally against the banning on bees, and now with this 6.126, it reading the permission required, I can understand the necessity of that. You're not being banned, you're allowed to register your bees, which is a safety issue. I can get that, and I appreciate that. I also want to say that I appreciate the many things that were added in protection of animals, the baiting, the protection of animals in hot cars, those that are being tethered, chained, et cetera. So there are, there are good things in here that I appreciate, but there are still some issues that I have and would like to see maybe worked on some more.
Does the black cat need to come sit down here? If you need to sit down here, you may. Otherwise, you can stay where you are. I just was giving you that opportunity. Mr. Higgins.
I'm a little man. I tend to rattle and tell stories that nobody's interested in. I'm going to tell you a story that you're not going to be interested in. I worked at Great, for Great Lakes Steel Car Operation for 30 years downriver Detroit. The steel mill took up five miles of riverfront intermittently. There was access to the river in certain places, but for the most part, it was five miles of steel mill. Now, in this five miles of steel mill, there were feral cats, and they wanted those feral cats in there to keep the rats down. Because rats were a problem. The cats themselves, they could deal with. And I believe it was 1957 or 1959, I'm not sure, I don't remember, that there was a log steel strike, went on for months and months. And there was a number of employees that had to stay in the mill during that period of time to maintain certain things, to keep certain things going, keep an eye on the mill itself. And after a short period of time, they were contacting people on the outside to sneak up the Detroit River, go around the picket line, and bring in cat food. Because those feral cats were scaring those people to death. They were afraid to leave the offices. There was, because the cats had been used to being fed by humans, no more food, and they actually were terrifying the people that were in there. So you stop feeding the feral cats, they're not going away. They're going to get terrifying, you know? And that happens. That happens. I know it did. And so, you know, not to feed the feral cats, I hate to see a situation here in Bisbee where people were afraid to walk down Brokey Avenue with feral cats being attacked by feral cats. And I agree with Johnny Jackerman, but there's a lot of good things in this ordinance. People come standing, saying that they're against the ordinance, and I know what you really mean is that you're against certain parts of the ordinance. You're not against the whole ordinance. You guys don't want to have dog fighting. I mean, just ban it. So to say that you're against the ordinance is really not the thing to say. The thing to say is I'm against certain portions of it. And there's a lot of good things in this ordinance. Now, the idea of bees, the bees have been there forever. When I came, when I first moved to Arizona, people said, you know, I had some allergies. When I came, when I first moved to Arizona, people said, you know, I had some allergies. And people said, eat the local honey, and that will help you with your allergy problem. You can't get honey much more local than the honey that I was eating. It was right around the street from, right, right down the street, actually. And I would hate to see that go away. Those, I know there's a lot of talk about Africanized bees. I know a couple of years ago, I think they killed a horse up here someplace, hurt it or something. You know, that can't be an issue. But, you know, we have a responsible beekeeper that's keeping these bees here. And the idea that, you know, we're not going to get rid of them, but maybe somebody should, you know, just keep an eye on that, you know, the city manager. I don't see where that's that big an issue, with the city manager decide, you know, who gets to keep bees. You know, I mean, if you get a responsible person doing it in a responsible manner that knows what they're doing, you know, I'm sorry, the bee guy wasn't here tonight. You know, that's one of the people that I would, I would like to hear what he had to say about that. But, you know, I, I, and as far as lifestyle goes, you know, people have had, you know, I was actually amazed when I first came here that, you know, actually, more or less in some backyards here, there's horses, you know, and, and within the city limits. And it's really what it's about is being a good neighbor, and a lot of people aren't good neighbors. There are people that, that keep barnyards right next to their next door neighbor, and they stink, they're full of feces, they attract flies, they make noise, they're irritating as hell. And yeah, we have to have some means of controlling that kind of behavior. I mean, absolutely do. You can't just say, oh yeah, well, you can do this, you can do that. There has to be some control over it because people take advantage and skirt the law, and it happens all the time. And there has to be some method of dealing with that sort of thing. And, but usually, there's complaints from the public. Somebody complains and said, look, I'm living next to a barnyard. What's the city going to do about it? Well, we have to have something in the books to do, to deal with that. There absolutely has to be something. So I think it's pretty generous, you know, let you have six chickens, that's pretty, you know, this is actually, it's a city. We live in a little tiny city in Old Bisbee.
No.
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 Let's keep it, this is my turn to talk. You've had your turn. I don't think I have anything else to say. Ms. Hudson?
I too have done quite a bit of, I don't want to say quite a bit, got some research on, on feral cats specifically, because that was the biggest area that concerned me. And what I would really want to see is the people who are running the shelter, be responsible for a program for feeding the cats and for the TNR, and coming up with a plan as to how that's going to work. Because I think if you have the experts doing it and monitoring it, I really think that it can succeed. How much, I don't know, because there are no statistics. There, there's no data on how well it works. Because when you return the animal to the area, you don't know if there's other animals that are being abandoned unless you know every animal that's in that area, which I think Dana did, because it was, was it a smaller number of cats or 45? Okay. That's not a small number. I'm surprised you know the fall. But anyway, to come up with a, a plan as to how to work that, or to feed the cats, have specific people that are feeding them and not just anybody, and having the community colonies. I know it successfully worked someplace else. I don't know where Gretchen Bear lives, but apparently it worked fairly well there too. And let's face it, we created the problem. Not we, Bisbee, but humankind created this problem, and we have to do something about it. It's not going to go away. So I think that our best bet is to try to organize and manage it as much as possible and have the experts do it.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
Everybody's pretty much covered a lot of what I had down in my notes. I do have a little bit of an issue with 6.1.2 on N with the owner. Because to me, it's conflicting because if we're feeding the feral cats, are we now their owner? According to this, we are. And then with Q on the any animal, if you're not there, you don't know if you were, if somebody was bitten without provocation. Because I know kids come by and with our neighbor's dogs and, you know, they throw rocks and their dogs can get out, they can get over the fence. So if they're bit, they, they could have been provoked. But I know that everything is a case by case situation. And then the other issue is on five, 6.1.5, on the care of the animals. I think most people that have pets take excellent care of them. And I know there's some that, that don't. We say that all the time, but my question is, how can any of this be enforced, that whole section? And then on the 6.1.7, the interference with the ACO, I believe this was an issue on Brophy. And I don't know if that's what provoked all of this, but, and then, you know, the feeding of, of the feral animals. You know, most of us aren't going to starve animals. And my kids, and I'll, I'll just use my kids as an example, they have always brought strays home, you know, two-legged and four-legged, all their lives, and they're continuing to bring these animals home. And we generally find homes for them or we keep them. They are, they are very well taken care of. So I don't know. I don't agree with not feeding an animal. And my husband grew up in the country, and, you know, he was always feeding, you know, raccoons, deer, scum, havelinas, you name it. You have a lifetime of that, it doesn't stop all of a sudden because there's an ordinance. So we probably would be guilty of some of this. And then on the 6.1.11 and the 6.1.25, to me, that's a little conflicting. And I, I agree with Bill on this as far as, you know, those that can keep a reasonable amount of chickens or whatnot on their property for their own use or for, you know, their family's, you know, eggs or whatnot. I think that's good, but we know that there are some that violate this a lot. And I know that there's somebody in my neighborhood that has, I mean, I hear roosters all the time, I hear ducks, and if they're, if they're already being kept up and their living area is, you know, I mean, I don't have an issue with that, but I know that we had a gentleman that came before us and was complaining about the stench and around monsoon time, like, I guess it gets worse. And then the, the last thing I have on this is 6.1.12 on the noisy animals. I think most of us that have dogs know that, let me get that part, know that if they are, mine in particular, I guess I shouldn't, you know, break everybody's into this, mine in particular, if they're out there howling or barking or causing a fuss, it's because generally when we go out, the havelina are running down the road, or there's somebody in the neighborhood that shouldn't be there, or another stray animal. So, I mean, that's what dogs do. They're going to, they're going to howl, they're going to bark, and that's most of the time to alert us to something that's not normal in our neighborhood. So, I don't know. That's just what I have for right now.
Thank you, ma'am. Couple of things. It was brought up that if we can't enforce the dog leash law, then how are we going to enforce these other things? I'm sorry, we're not taking questions. We had the opportunity to, to speak previously. And the point is that we don't have a dog leash law. That's how this all cut started, is because the dog leash law was written out of the statutes when there was a minor change in it. And this whole thing started with writing it back in and then adding some things from citizens' input that came in. People don't understand on occasion that it's very convenient to kill the messenger, but that most of what is, comes forward from the mayor and council is because someone has asked for that to come forward. They typically aren't sitting here and deciding what to do. Many of us don't have, if you'll pardon it, a dog in a hunt. Okay? It just so happens, and we're not advocating positions. What I would propose, because we don't have any member of the council that's voiced that they're 100% in favor of this. We have members of the audience saying that they're not in favor of different sections. I'm going to have to believe that they're not against, as I said, and then Mr. Higgins said, they're not against the animal ordinance, they're against sections of the animal ordinance. So what I propose is, I'm going to make a motion that this item be tabled until the first meeting in April. I'll second that. And, thank you, sir. And that I will...
It's a work session?
You can't, it's a discussion only.
Okay. I will indicate that this is what I will be doing. I will be at the next meeting, which is, and thank you for that clarification. I will be on the next meeting asking to, asking the council to allow me to appoint an ad hoc committee. So that this ordinance will be looked at by that committee, I'm going to specifically in public ask that either Ms. Gallagher or Ms. Salden be a member of that committee for direct input. And Ms. Jackman, hopefully you could participate.
Can, can I ask a question? Can we like open it up to members, possible members of the ward also to volunteer?
Yeah.
At the end.
And if, if members of the public would please, just, all you need to do is, is go online or stop at the office, ask for a volunteer for a, a committee application and, and fill that out. And then that'll come to me. That gives us enough time where, if the council allows me to appoint a committee this next meeting, then the committee will be appointed the first meeting in March, February. And that gives them the month of February and March to come back with recommendations that will go back through council to make sure that there's legal, that, that these recommendations are legal. And then to bring it then for the first meeting in April. So that's my intent. So, yeah, and take your second away, you can't do that.
I'll take my second.
Council desent, seem to fit as what they need. And Ms. Klein, you've got a lot of comments, so I would appreciate it if you, in the position as a counselor, give those to our city clerk so that she can then get it to the right people so that we're not violating the open meeting law by talking to each other about it. But, and I encourage all of you, all of you indicated that, you know, that you had some things you didn't like or that you would like to see different. I would encourage all of you to give those to our city clerk so that she then can get it to the ad hoc committee. They can then in turn get it to legal. And I want to come forward one more time to get this thing so that it fits what the community wants as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay? Yes, ma'am?
I've just got a quick question. If we don't have a current leash law, then why do we still have signs up at the Vista Park and around?
Well, because we, hold on. It still, that's a separate statute. We don't have a leash law, but having, believes us or not, this law's so antiquated that having a dog in the park is illegal. We have a statute that you can't have a dog in a park. We have a dog mark, but technically, I guess I don't...
They can't go there.
Technically, you, take the feral cats there. All right. Any other comments from our esteemed council? I hope that the citizens feel that you've, you've been heard and that you're being answered the best that I think you could be answered at this particular point, and that's a do-over. Did I make my... Do we have, Mr. Higgins wants to go home. Do we have a second to his motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you. Those in favor of adjournments signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Oppose, yea. We stand adjourned.